Now. Morning ladies and gentlemen, welcome to council for today's we'll get right at it. Called me to order most accepting agenda, move by second by yet not any additions here then. Do you know all those bits? Oh, that's great. Link decorate is appearing in question, gentlemen, each of their own. Doing none to a match was made our conference meeting. We have a move that move by website and the Eric or Michael. Thing the page one, page four or page nine. It's a provider, ship say provider, not providing. Uh, anything else? As amended, all of the favorite both that's carries. So this is rising in the matches and CL twenty four twenty twenty four, we have motion. Move by Gillis, second by Yevman. That would be any questions on this is the right comment. All those in favor? Both that's carried. First one is at nine oh five, we have a couple minutes. We move on into separate for the deal. Oh, you don't want to do those.
Yes, okay.
You can do that. Okay, two fourteen.
Okay, uh, the report from council today bring forward the position that was included in the twenty twenty. Four budget period of approximately six months in the budget for a new position. Uh, what were personally bringing to you, we're retiring facilities maintenance technician. So the report outlines. Which includes the draft job description. At the last meeting, there was the need to bring forward the. Job description for consideration by council because of previous one who do more management position. So this is a non-management position. So there's details that center are contained within the document. That. Council had requested so the analysis of the draft and description would. This position would be at a grade five classification on the grid. So and there's a potency to canic financial analysts, they will benefit through three five. So anyway, I'd be happy to get into any questions that council has.
Okay, in the course of the council. Council. I'd like it. More annoying. What I envisioned. Anything that did come up. As the speaker part of legislation, so. Would this position pick up our garbage? Person.
Okay, so the degree of involvement in the activities of individual community properties or with under the pates. Would be based on what they require. So that is something that we we will look at as part of that position. It's it's. Involving them. Right now the volunteers take care of that, taking.
That's just to follow up. That's one thing that the volunteers are getting tangled.
Oh.
Like where the hell. The other. So it's.
Yeah, okay.
How are you? Just bringing it up now, right away later, just a little bit. Well done.
Thank you. There's been conversation at the Hilltop Park meetings about who will be keeping up the garden. At this point, I'm suspecting it's Adam or. I'm just not sure, but it would be something good for us to have someone greater that could take care of the whole family.
Anyone else on the court? Do you know, uh, motion to. By this and secondly. So I can't remember if you can put up to twenty two, twenty twenty three. Twenty twenty four really and. Oh, no, I'm on the wrong report, sorry. Uh, result of the concept of the report, see, or reporting twenty twenty four, we've seen information for the. Job description, so technician with the time to take the very bypassed patient be proved to the council organization. Any further discussion? Do you know all of your favorite? Oh, that's good. Okay, uh, this, uh, I know why, so I guess we can back to. Planning reports. And first one is for zone change. Application for the model of the park assembly plan. And it's ready to want to come up to the table there. So we haven't moved into a public meeting, which we aren't going to typically notice, but. Let's do that and then I'll explain the process and move by it and a second by way, uh, even with the public meeting. All those in favor? Both that's here. Okay. So now anyone in the public can actually speak to council if they have any point. Uh, so the process is Spencer McDonald beside you there will be doing the review of the report. Uh, and if you have an opportunity, they will ask me questions you want. And we're both before, if you have an opportunity to make any comments you want, whether you agree or disagree. And then if you ask anyone in the public, you can get here or online, comment. And then council actually learn public need and make a decision. Okay, okay. So Spencer, do you want to please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good morning to council staff and members of the public joining us here this morning. The first application before council for consideration is for the Mount Elgin Pork Assembly Yard. Sorry, it does say plant in the report is actually Mount Elgin Pork Assembly Yard. Um, and in this case, the applicant has a property which is approximately two acres in size and has an agribusiness zone on it. And they're looking for a site-specific rezoning to stay within the agribusiness zone, but to have a special provision that allows them to do the storage. Of RVs, um, farm equipment and any other vehicles or implements. Um, that this surrounding community does require to be parked in a safer facility and not just left on their farm or other property. The property itself is just west of the village and is currently utilized. There is some storage taking place there now. There's an existing warehouse building. As shown on the slide before council. And really what the applicant is looking to do is have the permit, the permission of council to actually. Advertise and allow for the storage of RVs and similar vehicles on the property. I would highlight for council that as part of the. New official plan amendment policies for agricultural lands, there is additional flexibility on farm properties as well for RV storage in particular. I mean, it has been an issue historically where people have RVs and they have a very few places where they're able to store them. So this is an instance where we do think it is appropriate to allow for this property, given its location. Um, and the layout of the property, the location of the property that they could, uh, they could reasonably. Uh, park RVs and other implements here without issue. The other thing I would highlight is that the property will be subject to site plan approval. Um, so the township would review things such as drainage, stormwater management, fencing, any signage, parking, those kinds of details. Um, and that would get registered on the title of the property. We are supportive of the application today. There were no comments received as a result of circulation. Um, the applicant is also getting into questions and I'm happy to be the same.
Good, thanks Spencer. Any questions from council? Certification. Do you guys? You're going to begin comments.
I appreciate everybody coming in and talking about it and. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to expand our business, hopefully. Um, we will have different kinds of storage in the future.
Good, and the recommendation is a county would approve that.
Will be in favor, yes.
Okay, uh, anyone in the public wants to speak in favor of the application? Anyone in the public wants to propose the application? Do you know, uh, by council, any questions, uh, comments in council?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Matt, do you have any intention of amalgamating the yard with your yard right inside? At any point in the future that it will become part of a pro's transport?
Uh, no, I don't see that happening anytime soon. If it does, it won't be for a number of years. Um, so no, right now we're going to remain two separate businesses, both two separate properties.
Okay, and then in the existing building that's on the the pork assembly yard. Apparently low ceilings in there. Are you able to store anything in there of any significance or?
Yes, we can store, um, big cars and some old, some. Uh, top ten campers. Uh, so the door going in is a ten foot door. Or a nine foot door, the ceilings inside are ten feet tall. So, uh, as we would say to anybody that was interested, it has to be under nine feet. And less than twelve feet wide and then it could fit in.
I used to haul a lot of market weight into that building, so I was more interested in the bottom three feet than the top.
Yes, yeah, yeah. So it smells a lot better now, so.
Okay, any others? So I guess my tongue to the amount that. I'm always a little uncomfortable with these kind of applications because it started out as a legitimate agricultural, that's right. Uh, evolution happens and the business in agriculture has changed and the earth becomes more or less useless. And so I hate giving up agricultural land for things that's not agriculture. Uh, on the other hand. It's cement sitting there, nothing we sort of kind of, uh, certainly willing to support it. I just, uh. I'm always uncomfortable anytime. I'm just happy with the agricultural application rather than more of a commercial. Uh, and that raises a question for staff, will this be taxed to the commercial rate?
That would be that would have to happen.
Okay. Which is. I'm assuming before it was a. It would have been like. Well, the answer is.
Sure.
Okay, I just want you to be aware there may be a tax.
Yeah, we're aware that the, uh, with this only change would make it come a different, uh, tax of vacation. And we did try to find other avenues we could take with the property, but being such a, you know. Very simple building, that there wasn't a whole lot we could do with it. And with the ground being, you know, that two acres was probably most of that was gravel. So then returning it back into some sort of later valuable land was going to be helpful to buy more, so.
Okay, no, I was thinking more of the always like you say, agricultural, which is a magical. Anyways, uh, any further questions or comments? Do you know, then we'd be moved to the rise, moved by, we were talking to Kirsten. The right in the public meeting, uh, and it's good, all those in favor? Both that's carrying and the way of writing paper. I'm starting to get my recommendation maybe. Uh, the concert version, you're seconding that, any discussion? Do you know, all those in favor? Both that's carried, uh, you can feel clear there.
Yeah, it's a bit tomorrow, twenty days of the period.
So anybody can appeal for the next twenty days, provided nobody shows up, generally you're not going to. Uh, but there is a twenty day appeal period. Near the building.
Okay, good. I appreciate you telling us.
Twenty days from when it's mailed out, which will be tomorrow.
Right, yeah.
Okay, no, don't feel.
Yeah, I will send him an email with the notice of passing and the notice of no appeal on the basis.
Okay, okay. All right. Appreciate it. Thank you.
We have two minutes, uh, as we get done. Okay, so let's go to accounts payable. Uh, number ten. The motion to approve move by Goodman, second by Ray, result of following counter, we said payment account payable for May nineteen thirty point four. Five hundred and fifty seven dollars, ten, payroll number eleven down, thousand seven two ninety four, payroll number five fire, thirty one thousand eight hundred and sixty four dollars production. Payroll number five, council eighty thousand five hundred and twenty four dollars, eight cents for handle, five hundred seventy eight dollars. You need to. Counselor, sorry, counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just one question on the vendor payments over twenty five thousand. We've got octonan gravel there for thirty seven thousand. Um, I thought those were usually had around gravel pit.
And Adam will say it.
Uh, well, I don't know if this is the instance here, but sometimes it's less expensive depending on the area township it's being worked on. Because of the trucking costs, et cetera, to get it from. Uh, but I don't know that that's a particular case, so.
In generally in the northeast, or sorry, in the northeast of the township. It's further to go there than to, uh, because we're eventually going to be buying gravel. You see that every probably every year with. Okay, any, anything else?
Or just the, uh, the two invoices for dust control. It's, uh, it seems like quite a lot, but I know they had to start quite a bit earlier this year compared to other years. Just because of the way the season went. So.
I'm guessing we're still on budget. Uh, any further discussion? Saying none, uh, all those in favor? Thank you. Both that's carried. All right, uh. Now, fifteen, back to, uh, zone change application. Then importantly for wait for Jim to burn that you Jim? Did I announce that properly? Yeah, for perfect, yeah, it was working, okay. Uh, Jim, you want to come up to the table there? And you saw the process a few minutes ago, we're going to go through the process. Um, and then Spencer will do the report, so let him move to the public. Move by Gillis, second by Kirsten, any discussion, although it could do. Both that's carried. Uh, so now the same process, Spencer, uh, makes your report, council has an opportunity to ask any questions for clarification. Then you have an opportunity to speak, that we ask anyone public, either here or online, if they want to comment. Then, uh, a little discussion between them and council, there's other public meetings, make a decision. So Spencer, do you want to please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The application for council at this time affects lands on Plank Line, just south of the village of Mount Elgin. In this particular case, the applicant owns an approximate fifty acre general agricultural property. And he has applied to allow a garden suite, temporary garden suite for a period up to twenty years on the subject lands. The garden suite itself would be just under a thousand square feet in size and would be located in the same general vicinity as the existing dwelling and other buildings and structures. Would also make use of an existing driveway. Uh, staff, as a result of circulation, did receive comment from Long Point Region Conservation Authority. They did advise there's a large extent of floodplain on the subject lands. However, they are satisfied with the location of the proposed garden suite and have no concerns with it. Um, no other comments were received as a result of circulation. Staff are generally supportive of the application here today. And the bylaw has also been prepared for council's consideration to allow the garden suite for the period, um, desired by the applicant of twenty years. Happy to answer any questions and the applicant is also here to do the same.
Good. Any questions from council, council member? One of the things that just crossed my mind, and it's not out, it is. Why would you apply for a garden suite opposed to an ARU?
True you, Mr. Mayor. The primary reason that that we have found to date, uh, for applying for a garden suite compared to an ARU is cost. Um, in ARU, unless you're building something slab-on-grade and a very simple construction, we'll say. Um, the costs far exceed that of a concrete pad where you can move a portable garden suite onto, um, generally two to three times more. Um, so that tends to be the primary reason for that and also. It depends on individual family situations. Um, there's individual preferences as to why they want. A temporary removable structure rather than a permanent, uh, ARU. So it's. It's really up to the individual, but we do have provisions to allow for ARUs, as council is aware, and. We still will from time to time see people choosing the the temporary up to twenty year garden suite option instead.
Counselor, you're next.
Yeah, I just kind of lost track over the last year or two. What is our, our time regulations on garden suites at the current time? Like this one is for twenty years and then there's extensions available after that?
Yeah, you can billify it to thirty.
True you, Mr. Mayor. The planning act allows garden suites for a twenty year period and then extensions thereafter. Previously, uh, we would grant periods for ten years and then three-year extensions thereafter. Whereas part of the the ARU work that was done just last year, we revised the provisions for garden suites and said. Rather than do a ten-year initial period, uh, we do think we'll see so few of these now that we should do up to twenty years if that's what the applicants desire. And then they can still apply for the three-year extensions thereafter.
Good. Any other questions, uh, to the planner? Mr. Perd, any comments you want to make?
No, not really. I just want to know, like, we're going to get a. I'll get it passed through, then we're going to get a test hall done for the subject. But if they, um, found that movement or putting the subject behind it, is that mature? Or?
No, as long as there's, um, no conflict within, uh. Conservation authority, it's not going to matter what side. It would be better for conservation of the property. Well, they, they would have to give, they would have to let me know that they're satisfying the location of that.
Uh, any other questions or concerns that you have, sir? Uh, anyone in the public wants to speak in favor of the application? Anyone on the public wants to speak opposed to the application? You don't mind, anything valid, total, count, built, or thorough, but.
It's just a, uh, a point for Spencer. I was looking at the first map and I was having a hard time wrapping my head around where the location was. When it said airport road. It should have been, uh, approach road. So it was just a typo.
Great, thank you.
Uh, any other questions? Just want to, uh, the, uh. I guess the mobile home that's there now, that's what we're trying to use. I'm assuming, okay, and, uh. Go on. Oh, uh, for Howard then, um, do we have to do an inspection for, uh, the building from fire?
Uh, we do have to do an inspection, not of the interior, if it's a modular home. First of all, we do have to do an inspection of the exterior connections to the septic, to the water.
And do whatever bases, uh, up to.
Yes. And then fire has to do their inspection, mention the smoke.
So there will be, uh, a need for the fire team to go ahead and take a walk through.
Right.
Just wanted to be aware that, uh, that's me, because the morning of that thing, that. Okay, all right. Uh, any other questions? Do you know, we need a motion then to rise. And public meeting to move by record, second by Kirsten, any discussion, all those in favor? Both that's carried and the decision is, okay, move to the period. Move to approve and second by council project. Uh, any more discussion? I would simply comment, if you didn't know, this township is the first township to actually include, uh, garden suite back in nineteen ninety. And I'm voting very much in favor of it. I think it's a great idea to, uh, get. Uh, he can, and he just put by. Let's see, uh, it continues, uh, in the future. Is, uh. I think, uh, why not a, a RE. Uh, that's an issue where some people, it's known here and it's gone, other people, it's here and stays. This.
But clarify, you'll need two permits, one for the building and one for the subjects, seven.
Last thing is, uh. Because of the changes in the, uh. Prevent changes to the act, uh, there is a pre-op period, the same as for the others, the bylaw will be, or, uh, passed today. And then there's a twenty one, twenty one day. Twenty from the day it's mailed out, uh, opportunity for anyone to appeal, nobody here, so I'm assuming they're not going to, and then after that you can get the open permit and. And so that's another three weeks, uh, and then hopefully you're in a vote. Okay, uh, all those. We're out of the public meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion? Both that's carried. Okay, so, uh, any, anything else before, uh? Um, so on three weeks, I haven't heard anything, then I come out here to get a permit then? Uh, Julie will be in touch with you. Okay. And then, uh, you can see Howard being arranged for the permits. Okay, yeah, how may I say it? And this is quite nine thirty. Yes, so I'm, uh. Don't get to that, it may take a while, so, uh, generally, in the first one, we have a motion. Move by Wade, second by Kirsten, and I am the five. Any discussion, any of your side reports? Now, three, I'm.
Mr. Mayor.
When, when, sorry, we don't see you before, uh, good luck with the wedding.
Thank you.
After you have been, sorry.
So item one eighteen and one nineteen are kind of linked in that item five of your county report talks about the. The, uh, waste program. And just wondering why, uh, the county is looking for a seven-year contract that just seem like a bit. I'm frank.
It's like so long, doctors will go out. We all have a long time for garden strikes about seven here.
It just.
Even if I only want the. Full license.
Yeah, it just seems to me that going into a, a very, very unknown area in terms of how this whole system is going to work. That's a long time to tie ourselves into.
But that's why it is the trivia twenty five to twenty seven. And then twenty seven would be so. So I think their theory is that over the first couple of years, we'll have most of the bucks worked out. And, and but granted, the township, one of the cities will know what they are, who's one of the. In reality, I think probably like. In a bad situation. I would describe the, uh, the go forward on this phone to back over here. And. What kind of methodology, pretty much responsibilities and give us. I think the county has been fairly plausible on. Because they don't want to be stuck with people not being regarded. And, uh, so I think it'll be, uh, reasonable. To get us through the first. I'm hoping everything. I'm hoping everything. And the counter wet.
So our current truck is going to be able to withstand until twenty twenty seven?
Well, that's up to Adam. Uh, unfortunately, we have two of them and I'm hoping to be able to together. It's not that old.
I don't think it's that old.
No, it's like two years, three years old now. Three years.
Yeah, so I don't think we have any problem.
Okay.
But uh. And in the future, it will be theoretically garbage and potentially organic. And question around and and a concept leading decision around uh. Like cycle six day, five day, part of this is they don't want. Oh, to know that, so they're doing it, they're doing it, they're doing it five days or six days or every other week. And to be able to find a guy. Don't actually want people uh having some garbage on the day of the ceremony. Anyway, uh, anything further on uh? You generate correspondence? Seeing none, all those in favor of moving fine? Uh, both, that's good. All right, uh, I think the next one was uh. Information items. Or most non-information items, by Turner, seconded by Booker and Hudson B.
Don't file.
Don't file items twenty two, one twenty two, one twenty four, any discussion? None, all those in favor? Both that's carried. Governor. Uh. We'll get back to the public input. So it's that story, uh. Okay, so let's move into a public meeting for the development charges. Move by Booker, seconded by Way, any discussion? All those in favor? All those that carry. And we're now into uh that order. Oh, Julie.
So we just um. When we had our last public meeting, we had notice issues in the newspaper and whom we had to circulate to, so we just, we did provide another opportunity for any member of the public to. By comment on development charge or file passing in the zone by law, or sorry, the new development charges by law. Um, haven't received any comments in relation to that notice. So this is just one final opportunity if anyone worked here. We also sent a notice directly to lists of contractors that we have. So we have.
So uh, any questions from council? Anyone in the public wants to pick the paper or oppose? Seeing none, I can set some public meeting, uh, the motion again. It's figured seconded by Way, that we write in the public meeting back out though, all was in favor. All right, everything will go. Um. So we want the bylaws. So by law, they're agreeing with. So. And. She wants to uh. We're moving then for first and second reading. Move by, sorry, move by hit that seconded by. And Julie.
Well, that's called in violence, the introduction that maybe you read it first and second time by eleven to forty five, twenty twenty four, being violated, and then as you said, the socks with cycling control by law. I will note this specifically in relation to fees, we just changed the specific fee in the bylaw to reference the ten fees in charge of bylaws, so we do update it. Every time that we made a change to those fees. Um, and by law number forty six, twenty twenty four, being a ballot for men, touching the socks with only by law, resulting in efficiency and four twenty four oh seven. And by law number forty seven, twenty twenty four, ballot to men, touching socks with only by law, such a dedication, C N four eight.
Any discussion in those bylaws? Seeing none, all those in favor of questioning. And mostly now for third, move by Dallas, seconded by Tucker.
Well, that by law is number forty five, twenty twenty four, to forty seven, twenty twenty four, who's a. Be right a third time finally passed, such a mayor, the block, the sign by law, and um it's.
Any discussion? All in favor? Both that's carried, while here, my committee minutes from Stockford Hall. Here go mainly, we always, um, there's any comments?
I have no comment.
Okay, and you moving them? You have a secondary, second for the governor, uh, any discussion on those minutes? None, all those in favor? Receiving, both that's carried. All right, so uh, we're now back to uh. To the noise one, okay, so uh, moving back then to uh. The uh swamp explorer fiber installation. And uh, I didn't realize that I'm. Uh, we got a request. Last week. Uh, asking to do uh municipal consent for them to go down. Hopkins Road. They just sent a map. And they weren't the clearest maps. Uh, but most of it was on Hopkins Road. And then. There was a little wee chunk. From. Holden Road on Pressy going east to the first farm. So it's about a couple hundred yards. Uh, it's clear as.
Yeah, yeah.
And uh, um. Anyways, uh, Adam would be likely to give consent since a little bit carrying on. I don't know how to do this here and either our people or uh contractors. And uh, so we asked and what the meeting said.
Well, he was waiting for more than half of like his foot dance, admitted wasn't the actual. But uh, it was too vague. But he was not good. Permission.
So I have said, now probably the council should at least be aware of this, that uh. Reality is that they would do an extra, they're going to do it. Uh, and we probably focus in, and be contracted. So don't really want. Mess around with people's work. So anyway, I just want council to be aware of that. Uh, thought it was interesting that you would get that request after we'd send a letter to the province. Saying that it's not actually doing very much. And then uh, yesterday. Find it here. Uh, got an email from the province. Wanted to know. If we would have a conversation, a roundtable discussion with the ministry. On um. Internet service. Uh, in in conjunction with Roma. So, did you get this one, Bob? Amy, yeah, Amy and Roma were still here. Uh, and it's June twentieth, twenty twenty four. From one or two, but only select people have actually been. Uh, invited. So we were invited uh. Adorable invited. But there's prompt discussion and I assume that it's across the entire one, I'm wondering if this is uh. Uh, what are we going to do about exploring? So anyway, just so you're aware of that, we're uh. You did talk to Zach to make the phone, we continue on as time. So, uh, and we haven't heard back from Zach or from the ministry of the structure. Regarding the last letter we sent. And I'm thinking probably I want to send another letter and others, so. The uh. Because every day that's explored, there's any kind of engineering or they're doing it government for. And they're not going to. Not much sense in doing what they've done already. And I'm just wondering if this isn't a. Kind of a grab to see how much of the uh remains, dollars, dollars. Block sixty nine, if they can get before they give it uh, but they don't do it. They didn't do a lot of engineering or a lot, and the maps that uh, sent. Are right down. Fine. But uh. As I looked at it, it's all of it, but one law on Hopkins Road, Tolsberg. Uh, over and then it will jog at the. Your line there, jog around a little bit, so. Uh, watch and be careful. And then it starts across going west again. And all of a sudden it stops. And it isn't stopping at the road. This is stopping. And they're go, wow, people at the end of the road are going to be a little upset that. It stopped here and over there, but anyways, and then when I proceed, surprised me more to start it. At the flow and just go to the first farm. I know there's a couple houses there, but. Doesn't make any sense either, why would you? When there was spotlight. Anyways.
Yeah, because.
There may be more maps coming, but we haven't seen them.
Uh, I I know that they uh. Alton County, they they've done right up to Pressy Road. All those houses on that corner are covered uh in on their county. Uh. But there's nothing down Pressy line, but the thing is, is if you're going to go down it, there's probably five or six. Houses on the south side that you want to cover anyway. So why just go for the to the first farm?
Yeah, I don't, anyways, the map didn't make a lot of sense to me. It was like the. You know, it kind of went so far and just stopped. And uh, it may have to do with the coverage area they have, but uh. Anyways. Interesting time. Uh. That is all I had about that. More just to keep council informed of it. And uh, if we don't get a response in the next week or ten days, I'll send another letter with the industry asking what uh, what just. We've got kind of the. All right. Oh, it's current items. We all have the. Mark, uh, power from mother.
Yeah, so I'll take the.
Okay.
Um, so making clear for me, they are applying for an A G C O liquor sales license. I think they just want to serve wine as part of the activities. Our form, I apologize for the late addition of this. Um, we were in the process. Uh, confirming that the waters certainly have on-site works and it doesn't back work. Um, so we just need to circulate this for review. If there's any comments or concerns. Um, and if not, then I will sign the letter and send it back so that they can apply a probable license.
Those are bigger.
So this is a long term, like permanent? Application?
It's a sales license similar to um like what Madame of course has.
Yeah, it'll be like twelve months here. Are we concerned that the property is not. Properly?
It is owned for the bakery cafe and flower garden. Does have a special provision added to the property.
Is it, it doesn't require rezoning at its.
Not to my understanding, no, I don't believe that you need a rezoning. No, and the. The the approval of the liquor sale license through A G C O directly, we don't, we don't recommend approval or not, they just have to provide us with notice and get to acknowledge the notice.
Good. Any questions or comments on that? Seeing none, uh. You don't need a promotion to. Please. Sending forward the.
Um. We could do it, I just direction to S A, S A to sign. The municipal information letter and send it back, that would be. But it's not really approved.
I know, so I wondered if uh. Any concerns here, Senator Gilson, also for your additional version staff, certain by council, yes, that's. Definitely very good.
Signing that information letter. For the A G C O and the.
Good. Uh, any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Well, uh, just to make a comment, that it seems like they're trying to create a destination uh place and this is just. Add on to what uh, ev- every other place is that uh, has come up, you know, like uh. Uh, one, the, some of the wineries and the places like that, that have their restaurant and everything is, so it's just add, an add on, so I think it's good to. For the economy, so.
Good. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Both that, okay. All right, uh. Is that finish this off except for? Council roundtable, we didn't have any business. Okay, so let's do counter round table and we'll go back to uh. When we request for information, or request for uh. Noise, so. Uh, well, let's start with Ward six here.
Oh, man, okay, so you're lucky to him again. Uh, thanks. Uh, Ward six been uh busy the last little while, uh, first car show uh, end of uh. End of May was at the museum, I think there was over three hundred cars. Um, the place was full, uh, hopping with uh lots of happy people and having a grand old time at the museum, so uh. Yeah, it was uh, it was pretty exciting and the weather was beautiful, so that worked out great. Uh, and then this past weekend, uh, Beechville Firefighter Association had their breakfast. And again, there was over three hundred, three hundred and thirty adults and kids that were there. Um, it was great to see all the people despite the weather. Um, they did have a request from big brothers and big sisters have a a booth there just to. You know, encourage their services or finding mentors, so it was nice to to team in with other community groups and we have the ability to do so. Obviously, spreading the word about fire prevention too was great. Other than that, we have a uh museum board meeting coming up next week. And uh, that's about it.
Sure, I do. The most cargo and the uh. And Doctor Brunner.
Oh, yeah, it uh. Meeting coming up uh next week on Wednesday night, uh, might have to change it. I'll talk with Mary Ellen about that. Um. Last weekend was, or last Saturday, there was the craft show plus the uh, yep. Philly's yard sale, but Tilsenberg also had their yard sale and the uh. Uh, Taste of uh Summer. And Angersall had a yard sale and things going on, and so basically. There just didn't seem to be the uptake that there has been in the past years and not, not as many people. Walking up and down the streets, so. It might be a kind of a thing of the past or it's just way diluted this time of year, but uh. I think uh, it was a little bit disappointing for the track show sale. I haven't heard it back from them yet. Uh, there was one complaint that uh lawn lines came in and mowed the grass on Friday. So it was getting tracked all over the place. And I know it's been difficult for them because the grass has been growing so fast, but uh. With the dew in the morning, there was a few people complaining about slipping and sliding all over the place, trying to get their clues set up. So we'll have to maybe talk about that later with Adam. So uh, now that that uh. Things are pretty quiet down there. We have a lead on basketball nets, so hopefully we can get something up there that the people can break. But uh, it's going to cost a little bit more, but over the long run with my time and replacing them twice a year. It uh, will probably pay out. That's all I have.
I do, uh, word for.
Over meeting next Tuesday, the eleventh in Follins or West Oxford Hall, um, museum meeting on the twelfth. Um, just. I just mentioned about the car show, we had two hundred and eighty seven registered. And that doesn't count the cars that were parked on Beechville Road or the cars that were parked in the parking lot next to the museum or the cars that were parked. Over the tracks, it was. A s.
Crazy.
Crazy, it was unbelievable and none, none of, and people, they did it. I haven't heard a number how much they brought in that day, but I. It was, everything was well done, the, and the weather was in her favor, so that makes a big difference too, so. Um, that's about it, or word for.
Good, then word for.
Uh, the lines have their fish fry this Saturday, it's like uh, four hundred. Running really well, they've been really busy uh with that, so. The other thing is we've heard, I guess, the fundraising for the pickleball, it's done really much. Really well, so we're in good shape there. We hope to start that project in June. But I just want to make a comment about. Good, I know where people stopped by and look at our exhibit. I thought you did a good job. I'm sure you wanna talk to me. I did, thank you.
Then Ward two. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh I'm going to chronologue for order, so a week and a half ago, I had the pleasure attending the ROEDC uh banquet, ten year anniversary banquet. And um Southwest Oxford businesses placed extremely well in the, in the uh awards categories, we had a number of different uh. Local businesses that upon awards, self repair machinery, um orange door acres. Uh just a couple of them up top of mine, so. Jaikman's was in there, you got lifetime achievement award for Jaikman's and our own Jim Picker for a community leadership award, and so I. Shout out to Jim for job well done over many years at, at the ROEDC, so that was good to see. And then, yeah, last Friday night, we had the um. Community information night in Mount Elgin, the conjunction between uh Mount Elgin Community Center Board and Mount Elgin Parks and Rec. And um, yeah, we had, we figured out the people that went through that night. Um so, yeah, great success, a lot of good comments, shout out to Joseph College for providing the barbecue. And the food, and um. A number of local businesses, Crow's Transport, Pro Ridge Seeds, Volor Trailers, and many more that donated award prizes to it, so um. Uh great to see a lot of community support. And um, yeah, thanks to everybody here that was able to make it out as well, and to staff for the help in getting some of the displays ready and and. No, it turned out well, I'm not sure. If or when we'll run it again, um but I think there's uh definitely a need for, for events like that, so. Mount Elgin Parks and Rec, the uh ball season is underway now, we've got Tolsberg Manner Ball renting the diamonds, or nights and Saturday mornings each week for the next number of weeks. And we opened up the canteen again, so that was, had items for sale last night for the first time in, I don't know how many years. Um hamburger, or not hamburgers, hot dogs, nachos, and, and all kinds of uh soft drinks and anything else that, that this would love children to consume. That went over, I, from my understanding, I was not there, but I, I think it went over. And then uh have community information night, uh Parks and Rec launched the current discussion for the new park and development of it. And uh we're gonna be looking to staff to help us reach out into the community as much as possible in order to promote that. Initiative over the next couple of months, we have a draw that's ongoing now for folks to submit a completed. Uh draft plan for the new facility, uh what they'd like to see in it, uh we're trying to focus on the Mount Elgin British Oil communities. And the areas around them, and we would like to solicit as much information as we can from the public. So that it truly is Mount Elgin's park, and uh so, yeah, we'll be looking to see what ways we can get more of these surveys out and. To draw out more information. Longway Region Conservation Authority meets for night, and Durham Center Hall Board, uh not a lot new there, I was not at the last meeting, but we do have our community barbecue coming up. Uh before our next council meeting on June eighteenth from five to seven P M, so hopefully you'll all can make it prior to our council meeting.
Thank you, and Ward three.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, speak on Southford meetings tonight, looking forward to it. We're having an event on July thirteenth, is that outside event, a band is playing. Uh and the name of the band is Rockwell, um we know that they have a following, so we're hoping the event will be very good. Food trucks, our popcorn. That went over good at the community event that we've had there in Mount Elgin. So Hilltop Park is um. It's not doing too much right now, I suspect we'll be meeting, I think, in another month, the engagement forum. Uh we're meeting tomorrow, and I guess we're laying down a little more events for the engagement forum until the fall. With regards to attending the community information night. Uh we did make the draw, but we did not connect with the people because I was way out of letting. I have the um, the gifts in my vehicle. And I have the numbers of the people that I will call today because I own note, and I will call today. And um I, it went over well, it was enjoyable, it was really enjoyable. Great, I did receive emails about the airport. Unfortunately, when I went back to look at them, I, I could not get on my email, but that's another subject. However, I know there was a list of when they were going to be having their meetings, so I'll keep everyone updated. That's it.
Great, uh I didn't really have anything from the uh county, county, county report, I was trying to uh comment. Different there about uh evacuation to January. Or uh, uh leadership, community leadership was, uh but our agency and and uh. I guess I think that's kind of uh part of the government, it's the government's freedom, and clearly, I'm thinking of it. Yeah, we need and we want to, uh the comments, remember, next, next council meeting, council meeting. You go to Durham Center first, get your hamburger, hot dog, and then even council, uh let anybody coming here, I'm great. Uh to do a good bar, yeah, it's a fundraiser. Uh and then I didn't have anything uh. Seems to be a whole lot of things, uh garbage is one of them. We did have around, and that was exactly a few weeks ago, um it's kind of got things figured out there. The report that we got uh, just we've got four sections only done. And we've got another four or five, and. They started at the north, I think, so now they've kind of skipped around and done a couple others, and I'm wondering if it has to do with where they need to. C N or M P O or C P um permits to go under the tracks or under the road. If they maybe the second shift, it's gonna take too long, and they only got so much time with the uh. The installer, they want to max up at that time, and uh. But I think they're down on.
Razzle Road, yeah, just started uh.
Then. Yeah, so they've kind of jumped around a little bit, and uh. But uh. By the end of uh, I think by the end of third quarter, they'll go down. This year. And we go to pick out uh. Which is the most uh favorite? Anyway, uh other than that, I'm actually pretty satisfied. And uh, all the data, so, we have uh. Okay, take me by. Feature, and uh. Ten o'clock we have the uh, are you up and running, Cole? Okay, so uh next thing on the agenda is the uh North Ball Adventure Quest for weddings in Sweeper on Saturday.
Okay, thank, uh so, I'm adding the report, we have a bigger request for North Ball Adventure Quest for weddings to be placed. Up on Saturday next, be in Sweeper. This uh request a little bit late, so we delivered notice personally to surrounding residents, property, um. I've been circulating the only comment that we did receive by email. Uh to council, there were some concerns in relation to parking, and the individual also asked that um. The exemption only be granted until eleven P M rather than one P M. I understand from the applicants that they are going to have a band playing until midnight, I did let them know that typically in the past in residential areas, uh council has approved. Uh exemption until midnight, so I recommended the same uh for this, for this request, um. I also understand that the majority of people coming are actually from Sweeper, so I'm not expecting that there's going to be a lot of issues in relation to parking, they are planning to have parking. On one side of Leesus Drive and with overflow onto Wilkins. And they are expecting about a hundred guests, and they are going to be taking place at two homes located on Leesus and that. If there's any questions, I will, I do.
Good, any questions on this?
Well, I'll, I'll make a comment, uh. We discussed this last fall. I said wait till I get back in April to make the application, and we made the application on April third. But I guess it wasn't received, their, their email shows it said, you know, they were receiving, so. Um hence the late, uh the lateness of the uh request. This is a neighborhood wedding. Put on by uh. Approved people on Leesus Drive. That's why it's two houses. It is, the uh request is mirrored after the wedding that was held there last uh, last year. Uh one house, that was the Wilkins, uh they. They parked on the one side of the road. And the rest came over to my street and walked over. Uh I would think out of the hundred people, more, more, half over half will be Wilkins, which will go. Surprise this one, is that in the request? We'd actually discussed one with.
Okay, yeah, she said the band is gonna play.
Was it noise request? It's because of the band playing, I think. So I'll take credit at midnight. It's hard to work in certain, the noise request is uh. Were we, were you working?
No, it's just the answer completion thing, the not, yeah, not the.
So the midnight deadline matches actually with the band. Uh anyone else is concerned about when people actually. Any other comments on this? I was wondering about what the people in twenty five Leesus are saying.
They're at the wedding.
Okay. No, it's, it's interesting that like the.
They're involved in the wedding as well.
Okay.
There's four houses there that are all involved. The wedding will be at one house, and the reception out of the, another backyard with the, you know, bad.
And uh just thinking about it, um kind of look through there, um. We ever encourage people to use the peace park. But it's kind of thing like a, like a community wedding, but. Even just for the wedding, yeah. I look, that's a nice park, it's a nice spot. People could use it, uh. At the uh seventy one.
She put it, you could build a gazebo. To wear it.
Um any further discussion on this recommendation, uh here is to grant the exemption. It doesn't save the time.
Oh, sorry, I probably put midnight. I would recommend that it be pressed on midnight, which is the thing that's already done for other events in the past.
So uh, Council figure, are you making that motion?
Uh I have a question before we go ahead, uh we did have a uh objection.
Yeah.
Uh Julie, um. Who is notified when the, when the uh. When the information goes out? Is it people within sixty meters?
We sent it with, to people within sixty meters. Yeah, and we sent, and we did hand deliver it because we've been something, yeah, they, they had, they sent an email May third, but it went to my, as an attachment, and it went to my junk, and I. I could, didn't see it, and the attachment wouldn't open, which is why, which is why they're delaying. Yeah, so then when they followed up, that's when we started the process.
Okay, uh the property owner is concerned about the echelon in his property?
Yeah, they don't want, yeah, well, parking was an issue, uh they didn't want the exemption till one A M, they asked that it be limited to eleven P M, and then there was just concern about people gathering. Um I didn't think that they would be really into proximity of Lenas, though.
It's located well away.